All right, well, let's call the meeting to order. This is our regular September 25th, 2018 meeting. We will begin with an opening invocation and the pledge will be led by Mr. Lowell Johnson, following the invocation. So would everyone please stand?
If you'll join me. To Heavenly Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for the many blessings that you give us, Lord, and we just ask that you will continue to look over the ones that suffered during the recent hurricane south of us, Lord, and just help find peace for those that have lost so much, Lord. I ask that you will be with our commissioners this evening as they conduct the county business. Help them to do that in your likeness, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kelly, and thank you, Mr. Johnson. First item is to approve the minutes of the September 11th meeting, our regular meeting.
I move that we approve the minutes for the September 11th regular meeting as presented by our clerk.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Settlements of estates from our judiciary supervisor.
On behalf of Jody Hara, I have seven names to present. William Callison, Robert Eugene Dyke, Lindwood Joseph Evans, Williams Sanford Kelly Jr., Earl Edward Rose Sr., Carl Lee Tharp, and Roger Dale Traynor, and those are all in order.
Motion?
I move that we approve the final settlements as presented.
It's been moved. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Exonerations, county splits, consolidations as presented by our assessor, Mr. Joe Darnell. I have those in front of me. I would move that we present, approve them as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, we proceed to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Financials, Ms. Robin Lettermill.
We have the following arts and rec transfer from savings to checking. Greenbrier County Sportsplex, eighty-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirteen cents. That's for eighteen nineteen. Pay request number two for the grubbing and grading. Greenbrier County Sportsplex, one thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. That's for eighteen nineteen. Staking for the Sportsplex. That's a total of eighty-eight thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirteen cents from savings to checking.
Okay, I would move that we take eighty-eight thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirteen cents from savings to checking to pay these two arts and rec bills. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
We have five budget revisions. The first one is to increase 401-223. It's County Commission Professional Services in the amount of two thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars. That's a reimbursement from the Supreme Court, a drug court reimbursement. The second one is to increase court security overtime in the amount of thirty dollars. That's a reimbursement from the Greenbrier County Republican Club. The third one is to increase law enforcement overtime in the amount of one thousand three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-two cents. That's a reimbursement from the City of Beckley. Fourth one is to increase law enforcement departmental supplies and materials in the amount of seventy-five dollars. And that is a reimbursed, this was a check that someone donated for the drug dog. They wanted us to buy supplies for their drug dogs. That was a donation.
And how much was it?
Seventy-five dollars. And we usually pay for whatever we need for the dog out of supplies, so that's why that's going in supplies. The fifth one is to increase Planning Commission, 439-105. That's the insurance line. The girl that works in planning decided to do family health insurance, and that amount is nine thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars. She never had insurance before, and now she decided to take insurance out for the family. And there was never any insurance budgeted in that budget because nobody wanted it at the time.
Based on previous history?
Yes, but for her to get it now, it's nine thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars that will need to move from contingencies or somewhere to put in that budget.
There's no problem with open enrollment period or?
Uh, no. I don't guess. Anna's checked on that. That I have not checked on.
And she didn't have to because her other health insurance?
Yeah, she had health insurance and dropped it, and I think that makes a difference. It ran out.
It ended.
Yeah, it ended.
Changes, job changes.
When it's like that, they make exceptions.
Okay.
Okay, is there a motion regarding the budget revisions?
I move that we approve the budget revisions as presented.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
We have no line item transfers.
Okay, I have a stack of bills here that we've all three gone through. I would move we pay those bills as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, down to presentations. The CBB Annual Report, Ms. Kara Dins.
Thank you, President. Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
And thank you Commissioner McClung and Commissioner Rose for allowing me to come tonight and give you our annual, annual report and let you know how things are going at the CBB. It's definitely a pleasure to be here. Before I get started, I just want to make a few introductions. I want to thank Commissioner Lowell Rose, who sits on our Board of Directors representing the County Commission. Also have our President Mike Kidd there in the back row. He represents the Chamber of Commerce. And we also have Greg Furlong here. He sits on our board representing the Greenbrier. And also have a couple of staff members with me. Delilah Dixon, who is our office manager. She's been with the CBB for 12 years, just a little longer than I have. And then our newest member is Valerie Pritt, who is our communications manager. So she does all of our public relations. She's a Pocahontas County girl, but she's living here, and we're loving having her. She's a graduate of the WVU Reed School of Public Relations. So we're excited that they're all here with me tonight. I've given each of you a copy of our annual report. In your folders, you'll find our visitor's guide, our current media pitch sheet. That's what we use when we go out and talk to media just to give them story ideas, and also our new calendar of events. That's something new. We started a couple of years ago, and we do those quarterly. And so hopefully, whenever you're out and about into restaurants or shops, we try to get them everywhere we can that show what's going on in the next few months here. So when visitors are here and they look at that, hopefully, they'll see something that catches their eye, and it will ask them to come back to the area. I know you all are very familiar with us, but in case there's anyone in the audience that not, that's not, I just want to talk about us for just a moment. We are a 501(c)(6) nonprofit corporation funded by 50% of the hotel motel tax collected by Greenbrier County, Lewisburg, Alderson, White Sulphur, and Ronsfort. Our mission is to positively impact the area's economy by marketing the region as a premier tourist destination. Right now, we have five full-time staff and four part-time staff. Those part-time staff work at the visitor's center where we see over 35,000 people a year. We're open seven days a week and 362 days a year. So we try to always have those doors open nine to six through the season, nine to five during the wintertime. So when people come down the streets of Lewisburg or, you know, get off the interstate and see the signs, we want to be open for them and give them their information and get them out spending money. We are also directed by a 13-member Board of Directors, and they represent all of our funding entities and various representatives from across the tourism industry. So I don't want to take your time reiterating all that's in our annual report. You gentlemen can read that for yourself when you have a moment. So I just want to focus on some highlights. Hotel motel tax revenues were up substantially this past current year over 16, 17. Obviously, the 16, 17 fiscal year was right after the flood. The county was, bed tax was up 18% over what it was the year before. It was up 3% from 15, 16. So even though we obviously knew that hopefully there would be that, a pretty big increase after the year of the flood, we're still up a very respectable 3% over the last year before that. Just wanted to let you know that we just received numbers from the West Virginia Tourism Office. They do an annual economic research impact study. You'll see in the, the report that I gave you that the direct spending number for 2016 was 199 million. I was able to get my hands on the Greenbrier County numbers before they've actually put the full report out. I know Chelsea Ruby gave the, gave an overview of this at the Governor's Conference last week when Governor Justice was there. But the 2017 direct spending number went up to 232 million. That's a $33 million growth over the year. Earnings went from 97 million up to 111 million. Employment jobs went from 2270 up to 2,690. So it's great to see that those numbers rebounded after the flood year. Right now, we have a major focus on our public relations efforts. I visited with 16 members of the media in DC back in July, and they showed amazing interest in our area. Of course, everyone knows of the Greenbrier, but people were hearing about Lewisburg and all the things there are to do in our area. We've already had one visit from the Georgetowner Magazine. She was here in August. We have a lady who is coming in on Thursday that Valerie will spend a couple of days with. She's going to be at the Greenbrier and doing some other things around the area. And we're really focusing on getting the word out about the new flights. The writer that we brought in from, she lives in DC. She took the flight to Dulles. I picked her up. We did our thing, took her right back to the airport. She couldn't say enough good things about the area and how easy that inexpensive the flight was. We're also working with Brand USA, and Brand USA is kind of the CBB of the United States. We're going to be partnering with them and our regional partners, Adventures on the Gorge and the Charleston CBB, to host an international travel writer coming here from Germany in the second week of October. You know, the international market is really untapped by West Virginia. And now, I think with our proximity to DC and also having these flights, international visitors that have the money to travel and have been in the United States, they've been to see Mickey Mouse, they've been to New York, they've been to DC, but they want to get out and see what real America is like. So I really think it's a huge opportunity for us to get those folks here. Also want to let you know that next Tuesday in downtown Lewisburg, the West Virginia Tourism Office is going to be filming their new commercial, and they'll be in Lewisburg and the surrounding area filming for that. And we've worked really closely with them, trying to scout locations, on-screen talent, and workout logistics. So we're, please pray for good weather, that we don't have a morning of rain. Also want to let you know that, you know, we take our role as the destination marketing organization of this county very seriously, and we're always doing our best to promote and represent all of our tourism partners across the county. Our executive committee met three weeks ago to discuss our new year and how we can build better relationships across the county and strengthen our tourism industry. At that meeting, the committee voted to recommend to the full board, which meets on, in two days, on this Thursday, that we increase the size of our board of directors. One of those seats will be designated for the Greenbrier Valley Airport Director because we think it's very important that they, that we build that relationship up, and two at-large seats. Now, of course, after that, about a week after that meeting, I found out that the airport was considering opening their own air service CBB. And so they voted to create a committee, and we are hoping that we can sit down with those folks and maybe have a seat at the table to see how we can work better with the airport to achieve its goals of getting additional air service. We've kind of been there. We know the history and have worked with the Greenbrier and even made deals with Delta in the past. So we're hoping that we can bring something to the table there. The executive committee also gave their approval to move forward in creating a new advertising campaign. We've had this campaign since right after the flood, and so it's time to freshen it up and do something different. And we'll be meeting next week as well with our board members. We also have tourism partners that sit on that committee, and we'll be working with Folgren-Mortin, who is our agency of records, to start that new campaign. So those are just a few of the things that we're working on. We're very excited for the new year, and as always, very much appreciate the, the support of the County Commission, and I'll take any questions if you have any.
We now have direct, non-stop flights to Chicago.
Mm-hmm.
That's seven plus million people.
Right.
What, what are we doing to try to attract those, those folks to come see us?
That's one of the things that we're going to be looking at when we sit down to look at this new marketing plan. The biggest problem we have with Chicago is it's such an expensive market. And it, so it costs a lot of money for a CBB of our size to penetrate that. But that's definitely something that we are looking at. We'll be looking at, see if we can get travel writers, because of course, that's our, that's the easiest way. If we can get people that are travel writers and bloggers from that area, get them to come here and get the word out, we'll definitely reach a lot of people. But it's something that's definitely on our radar and that we're, you know, looking at and trying to consider. We, we decided because of the proximity and the knowledge to focus our energy on the DC market first, but that's, that's definitely on our agenda.
So the answer is that's yet to come?
Yes, yes. Like I said, we, we've not, we've not taken that on because it's just so very expensive to get into that DC market, I mean, into the Chicago market with advertising.
Okay, next year, next summer, we're having a rather large gathering of scouts coming.
Mm-hmm.
Can you give us a breakdown of what you're doing to work with those folks to, to find housing here and come here and, and the close proximity that we have to that and, of course, the airport?
Yeah, we have reached out to them and are looking at doing some advertising in the magazine that goes out to all of the scout groups. You know, a lot of them will be coming by bus, and parents may not be staying here. They'll bring them in, drop them off, and take them back. But we're looking at doing that advertising, and I'm working with the hotels to find out what kind of occupancy they have during that time, and if there's a certain way we need to, to reach out to them to try to find groups or, you know, just where we are. Because we also have the fact that the golf tournament is going to be moving. And that's one of the things that we're really going to be looking at is that 4th of July season, because we used to have families and different people that would come to the area during that time to spend here that haven't been able to because of the golf tournament being over the 4th of July. So we also see that as a, you know, an open and an opportunity that we're looking at to, to make sure we get the attention and bring the people to the area for that.
Isn't that approximately the time of the jamboree?
I think the jamboree is closer to the end of July. So we're, what we're really looking at is kind of that end of June, you know, getting the word out about the Alderson 4th of July. You know, a lot of people that used to come to the Alderson 4th of July celebration just couldn't come anymore if they lived so far away that they needed lodging. Because, you know, all the local lodging was filled, especially with just support folks, CBS and those types of things for the golf, excuse me, for the golf tournament.
Does the golf tournament set a date for next fall?
Not that I'm aware of. The last I'd heard, they were looking at September, but I don't think that they've set, set dates yet.
It'd be interesting to see how the new date for the golf tournament does, but I'm kind of glad, in a way, that, to see it moved off the 4th. I just, it, it seemed to kind of override all the other things in the county that was going on on the 4th. And, and I'm glad that there, there's still happening and, and everything. And I think if it is in September, it'll be about the time that, or that the trees are normally changing, the, the.
Yeah, and September is, is, right, and it's, it's really kind of been a shoulder season for us. So really, I, there's a lot of opportunity there, a lot of hotel rooms that aren't normally filled that I think will be filled for that.
And another thing is the next, this coming year is the Greenbrier East All School Reunion. There'll be a lot of people coming to account for that and looking for lodging.
Yes.
And that is 4th of July weekend, the weekend prior to 4th of July.
Gotcha, yeah.
So, you know, we're having a lot of people come in for that.
Yep.
So, anyway, we appreciate you coming.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next presentation is the airport presentation and an update. Mr. Steve Stoddard.
Mr. Hannah, what time is the clock? Kelly, put me on it.
I'm thinking.
Right on. Last time I was in under time, and another question got asked. Anyway, thanks for having me. A lot of things going on at the airport, so I won't lament everything that's going on, but everywhere you look, there's a piece of construction or improvement. We've really taken a progressive approach. The number of projects we have in front of the FAA right now, about four tracking through normal airport improvement projects to the tune of around $6 million or so. We have another six to eight that are tracking under supplemental airport improvement projects. There was a posting by the federal government, these are 100% programs. We normally have to cost share at 2.5%. So we have six to eight right now that we are putting forward through this second vetting process that will happen in October. Hopefully, we're a winner. The only person in the first round to get anything was the Charleston Jaeger Airport, and they've got an access road approved under the first round. So we do have some things that are already out. They're engineered, they're bid, the packages are there. Anytime you can get 100% cost share on supplemental, and it's really earmarked economic development. So if we can do a ramp expansion to park more aircraft, if we can do something to update the security plan, fencing, there, there's a lot of things that this money can compete for. We'll see how we do. So on the construction side and, and bringing new business, we're working hard every day to bring new businesses. We did get Jet America. They are in the process right now of working with the building and zoning downstairs to get that hangar geared up for aircraft sales, aircraft charter, and FAA Part 145 maintenance, repair, and overhaul facility. So we're very excited about that. The big white elephant in the room right now is maybe the short notice of, we didn't do a soft rule out on a, on a potential of a convention and visitors bureau for air service, and everybody would like to ask why. Well, the why is simply this. Air service is a key component to tourism and economic development, and in this county, you cannot separate the two. That's an undeniable fact. It is my hope, as I've said many times before, that the first time someone comes here, we hope that they are here for pleasure, and maybe we convert them to the next new business in Greenbrier County after they visit the second time and look at a site, and the third time, hopefully, we're bringing them to Greenbrier County. So airports are an economic development engine. I was, I followed the governor of Virginia over to Covington and Clifton Forge. He flew in this morning. The, for those who have not seen a press release yet, the West Rock Paper Plant's $250 million in new investment in West Rock announced today by the governor of Virginia. So while in function and by bylaws, we are the Greenbrier County Airport Authority, and it was the folks that sat in your seats in 1966 that created us. The reality is, my job doesn't stop at the county lines, although we're going to talk about hotel motel taxes, and we're going to talk about all those other things. As an economic driver, if we're working with Clifton Forge and Allegheny and Bath and Monroe and Mercer and Summers and Pocahontas and all of these surrounding counties, Fayette and Raleigh and Nicholas County, let's look at the impact that an airport has. And if you look at other airports, when you look at Charleston Jaeger, when you look at Huntington, when you look at Clarksburg, when you look at three of the biggest and most successful airports that we have, they are set up under Chapter 29 as a regional airport authority. We are a county airport authority, and the code kind of came after we did to match what was done here. So the county did an amazing job of setting us up, but the reality is, is that all ships rise on the same tide. And we, in Greenbrier County, hit terminal velocity if everything that I do as an airport is confined to right inside the county boundaries. We can't look at it that way. When we attract new, larger businesses, I hope that they are right here inside this boundary. I do. And the tourists, when they come here, the first time, they might visit Gregg, the second time, they might visit somewhere else, the third time, they're just looking at the county in general to see the covered bridges and the, and the beautiful pasture lands. But people who fly into this airport are going to rent a car, stay at a bed and breakfast, stay at a resort, go do some skiing, maybe go do some whitewater rafting. It is a West Virginia effort, and airports are here to serve West Virginia. Now, as, you know, when we refer to federal aviation codes, well, the federal aviation code doesn't say, yeah, you're just there for one purpose. You're here for the broader public because you're taking billions and billions of dollars in federal money over the years. So it kind of changes the way I look at it, and I hope that that doesn't come off sounding, you know, strange or obtuse, but the reality is, we have to look at a regional concept when we're working with airports. The biggest thing that drives an economy is good access, and we haven't had that in a while. We all know that. We're looking at numbers already. We will hit 10,000 departure implant, or end placements this year before the end of the year. We have roughly double that for inbound traffic. It's a little bit odd, depending month to month, we have about 60% inbound traffic and only 40% outbound. So a lot of people must really love Greenbrier County and the surrounding areas because they stay. We haven't nailed that down as to why. Last month was the very first month that I actually saw some almost 50-50 split. But good air service drives a tourism economy, drives a general economy, but essential air service, if we look at it, it only provides 12 round trips per week by federal regulation, end of story, and it's very, very defined. Within the week, 12 round trips a week, gives you latitude of about 24 hours left or right. They can't swing it. We can't say, hey, we need less flights in the winter and more in the summer. The system is just not that flexible. However, when we looked at 2012, when Delta was here on a minimum revenue guarantee, it was paid for by somebody else, was not paid for by the airport, was paid for an outside agency or entity. And when we stopped that contractor, when that contract ended, you could see the big bubble. We did 30,000, 33,000 passengers in 2012 through the airport coming and going when Delta was here. Those flights flew at a capacity rate of average about 75% capacity, on the low end, about 40, on the high end, about 86. Newark, New York did not do well at all. It struggled to break 39%. It was more down in the 16% passenger load factor. You can't fly a flight on 16%. So if we sign a minimum revenue guarantee, what does that mean? If the airline comes in and says, it's going to cost you, let's just say, $6,000 each way, direct operating cost to go to Atlanta, I don't think there's anybody in the room that would say, we don't want to go to Atlanta, but we're probably looking in the realm of $6,000 each way, including all the fees and gate fees and sundry items. That costs a lot of money. That airline is not going to stand up and do it on its own. It's going to need somebody to say, you're standing behind me with a checkbook to make sure that we're not assuming all the risk. Everybody here has to have some skin in the game. Now, if it takes a 50% passenger load to get to a break-even point at whatever the fare rate is, well, if the plane gets to the point where it's filling itself, we're off the hook. We don't owe anything. But you have to have money in the bank. You have to have a way to guarantee those funds to be there, to sign that contract with, directly with Delta, which, oh, by the way, no airplanes and crews available at this time, but there's a workaround for that. Whoever it might be, we have to have a way to guarantee that the money is there, and it can be done. It's done. Clarksburg is doing it right now. As I said, at our board meeting, Clarksburg added a few extra flights into Chicago. Those flights are now paying for themselves, and they're zero out of pocket to add those couple extra flights a week into Chicago. Now, Rick, the director, and I talk all the time, and Greg in Shenandoah, Virginia, and I talk all the time. We have the same air service consultant. We're good friends. We're good coworkers, I think would be more important to say. We're good coworkers. So if it comes to the point where I go through Rick to add a few flights to Chicago, or he goes through us for a Delta connection, we're all willing to do that, and we all know what it takes, and we all need to have money in the bank. Rick does. We don't. Rick goes out and beats the street every year to put money in the bank. The last time he went out and beat the streets, about $350,000 that he was able to raise to bring into the Mid-Atlantic Aerospace Complex. Who does fund that? It doesn't go through the CBB. It goes through Mid-Atlantic Aerospace. In Virginia, Greg works through his, his ways over there to bring money in to be able to subsidize air service. We can't. The airport authority by federal regulation cannot do it. County commissions kind of can, yes, by state code, the provision is there, but the easiest way to do it is to form a CBB to put a small portion of hotel motel tax in there and to have some. to put a small portion of hotel motel tax in there, and to have some money in the bank for us to go out and do this. You know, there are people in this room that do air, or that do tourism things, and they do it really well, and I'll applaud that. But at the same time, I think that we know air service, and we know it really well, and we've hired the best. We know what the demographic is. I know that Chicago, in the early days, and I'm waiting on a set of numbers right now, they're a little bit squeamish about the way they present them to me, but about in the, in the early first three months, 63% of traffic from Chicago was not connecting traffic. It was origination Chicago, destination Lewisburg. Well, I'm actually working with Larry Klein at the Greenbrier Sporting Club because Larry bought some high-value zip codes. He knows who the customers are. I think that whatever marketing plan he had works very, very well. But my marketing consultant that is under the same contract, our air service consultant, has a marketing department. We're going to get together here in the next week or so and determine what he bought and what, what we can track from what he bought. Now, I don't think Chicago's that expensive. There's plenty of ways to do it. Television? No, I couldn't do that. Radio? No, I probably couldn't do that either. But digital marketing costs really the same all over the country. You know, you buy 10,000 impressions, it costs X number of dollars. Digital impressions and geo-fencing are not that expensive, and it's not exclusive to zip codes. Now, if you get way, way down deep in the weeds, there may be that person that says, yeah, okay, certain zip codes are going to be more competitive, and you're going to have to do that. But when you put up geo-fencing, and, you know, every time we click on a computer, everywhere I've been, I was at Lowe's looking for shrubs, and I need three more hollies. Anybody has hollies? I need three more. But every time I log on to the computer right now, somebody wants to sell me a holly bush with little purple flowers. So we know how digital marketing works. We know what conversion rates are. So we saw the ad, they clicked on the ad, they bought a ticket, they flew to Lewisburg, and there are ways to see how that consumer behaves, and it's not terribly expensive. Now, we've advertised with the local papers here. We've done our portion of television advertising and radio advertising. We have not laid our money on the table for digital product yet because we want our marketing team to dial in on this. If we're going to throw darts at the board, we want somebody to tell us which numbers on the board we need to hit so that we win at this game. And I'm not a very good dart player, so we need to be able to define the person that we're looking for and go after them, and not duplicate the work that Kara is doing, not duplicate the work that the Greenbrier is doing, not duplicate what another tourism partner is doing, not duplicate what SkyWest and United might be doing. So SkyWest and United are holding their acorns right here in their pocket for now, and I think once everybody else has their market placement, they're willing to step in and do some advertising. Likely, their portion of advertising, United and SkyWest, will be maybe in airports. So in the Chicago Airport, in the Washington Dulles Airport, 2 million people a week traveling through Dulles. Well, if they walked over to the concourse and said, you know, amazing resorts and one amazing airport, you know, you see how 2 million guests a year walking through that airport. How many are going to pass that concourse? How many are going to pass that digital sign? Repeat customers are a big thing. The first time they come here, they do one thing. The next time, I, we've lived here nine years, my family and I, we haven't scratched the surface. I'm going to tell you, though, my family and I have traveled this country over and over and over, and there are some really cool spots out there, but we have to believe in ourselves, and we have to believe that we're a destination that can hold our own with anybody. And I think there are a lot of people in this room that said, I knew that. Well, we do, but it's going to take the hard work to get it here. The status quo doesn't take much effort. It doesn't take much money, you know, and we, in some regards, kind of held the status quo at the airport. And I'm not saying we as a collective group, but at the airport, frankly speaking, we let it happen to us. We didn't go out after it. We didn't work hard. So all the things that I'm saying right now are about as uncomfortable as being in the front pew at church on a Sunday. You know, when somebody tells you, you're lukewarm, or you need to be saved, and you're like, oh, boy, this feels uncomfortable. Well, getting where we need to be and driving the economy of this region sometimes is going to take some direct uncomfortable conversations. And I don't do that on purpose. I don't do it to be spiteful. I don't do it along political lines. I do it because I'm in love with this state. We moved here for a reason. My roots go incredibly deep. I, there's somewhere out there, there is a child in Greenbrier County that doesn't know what they're going to do with their life yet. They don't know that this meeting is happening, but they are trying to figure out how far away from home they're going to have to go to find the job that they want. Our job is to keep them right here, and we've been saying this for three or four generations, the buck stops here. It's our time to get this done once and for all. And as the old military statement goes, lead, follower, get out of the way, please, because we've got a job to do for the people that are the generation below us. So that's a whole lot to say, but know that we're passionate about it. We're working on it. We're looking to find the best way to facilitate it going forward with a continuous funding stream, because what we can't do is say, we've got a little bit of money this year, but we don't have it next year. We don't have it the year after. It's got to be a continuous funding stream so that we can grow this and people can count on it. We have written letters. You all don't know the breadth of everywhere we are, but I was at the Bechtel Reserve, oh, I don't know, 60 days ago. The 365-day clock has started. It took me almost two years to get in the door. Don't ask me why it is so tight, but to get through the door is tough. But we finally gotten through the door. I'll be at Bechtel on Thursday evening with the Beckley-Raleigh County Chamber of Commerce for a meet and greet after hours to see how things are going for the 2019 International Boy Scout Jamboree. There are 46,000 scouts already paid in 100%. There's about 130,000 visitors expected here for this event. And one of the biggest things that the, the planners, there are two major groups right now that the scouts officially don't recognize any one group, but there's one in Charlotte, and there's one somewhere else, and they kind of seem to be driving the bus literally. These scouts are being taken into Pittsburgh, and they're touring Pittsburgh. These scouts are being taken into Washington Dulles and touring everything in the capital, which we knew and expected. And then they're taking a bus ride to Charlottesville to look at Monticello, and then they're coming here. The other scouts, the scouts in Texas, Scouts America, only really recognized a couple of airports. They're looking, they said, we're pushing everybody towards Charleston West and Charlotte, North Carolina. I said, why in the world would you do that? Charlotte traffic, Charlotte without traffic is four hours. Charlotte with an accident could be forever, by the way. And I said, we have commercial service to Washington and Chicago O'Hare, and we'll let the scouts tour DC and bring them straight in here. Well, the problem is, is that even though we got to them with 367 days to go, they said, you should have been here four months ago because these decisions have been made. Scouts are touring everywhere in America except for the state that's hosting the darn event. Nobody's going to Seneca Rocks. Nobody's going to Cass Railroad. Nobody's earning a merit badge at the Green Bank Observatory. And by the way, you could have coordinated that, and we could have had them earn a merit badge for science at the Green Bank Observatory. There are so many things that West Virginia had to offer, but we let it get past us. It got past me, no matter how hard I worked. I hit a brick wall until finally, somebody on the inside invited me over, and we, we made a big trip here a couple of months back. So the Boy Scout Jamboree, now, this is international, folks. I mean, again, what are the international parents going to do? We can add in the extra flights. We talked to United about that. We need to show them that, that we have the capacity need, and they'll add in potentially the flights at no cost to us. We've been talking to United for that, about that since, well, when we got the rebid last, when they got awarded in November. So these are not new conversations, but sadly enough, we're still a little bit behind. The best we can hope for is the National Jamboree. Bechtel will be the National Jamboree headquarters continuously from here on out. The Ruby Welcome Center is beautiful, by the way. If you haven't been, you need to go see it. So anyway, I said a few minutes ago, I thought I was done, and now I should really be done.
Questions?
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. You have one last question. Public comment for agenda items.
There are none.
Okay. Consider local board appointments. Just to bring everybody up to date on the ethics question that we had raised a month ago now, I guess. When I came in this afternoon, I asked Kelly if, if we'd heard from the Ethics Commission, and they, she informed me they hadn't. I said, let's get ahold of them and see what's wrong. And the person that we were trying to get ahold of was not there, the one that has been given this responsibility to respond to us. So I've asked Kelly to follow up with that in the morning and make sure we know what, what is the holdup. I would have thought we would have had an opinion by now. Any other board appointments that we need to discuss or? Good? Okay.
I'm sorry.
On that board appointment. We're waiting for the Ethics Commission. I know we've been waiting for a month and a half now.
Approaching that, yes.
Yeah, about a month and a half. We also ask our prosecutor to give us an answer, which we have got in writing. We have got verbal, that there's not a problem. But the board appointment for the Airport Authority is, has to do for us, filling. So if we're not going to take that up tonight, I think we need to make sure that it's on our agenda for next time, and that we fill that position at that time. I don't think we need to delay it any further.
I agree.
I think, I would really, I'd go ahead and do it tonight, but we'll wait and get the, see if we can get that in writing. But I think it needs to be done. It needs to be done in the next couple of weeks and be done with. We've got a lot of things going on at CVB. Of course, the Greenbrier's got things going on with, I talked with the CVB Board a couple of weeks ago, whenever I met with them, and the Airport Authority, the CVB, Andrew Hagie, and the, what's the group there?
River Valley Economic Development.
Corporation.
Corporation. I recommended, when they were talking about the board appointments,
that Kara was mentioning earlier, and we discussed, you know, the airport manager going on that. We discussed the, and I recommend it as one of the at-large seats, and maybe Mr. Hagie should be on there. The two aren't exclusive. I know there's a big difference between tourism and, and manufacturing, or, you know, trying to get businesses into the area, but it does go hand in hand to some extent. We don't have any coordination. We haven't had any coordination between the airport, the CVB, and other people in the last several years, like we should have. And I think it's time that we start, and I know Kara has, I know Steve's reached out, but we need to start as the commission, we need to start pushing for that type of meeting. Put those groups together and meeting with them and, and trying to get things to where they're all working together, pulling together. And I think when you don't do that, you don't meet together, then you get a lot of mistrust and a lot of misunderstandings, and I think that's a big part of what we've got going on now. And I think that's been a major problem. So anyway, like I say, I'd like to have it on our agenda for finally, at our next meeting, to appoint someone in it. But we'd like to see the CVB and everybody with the commission and the airport all kind of start pulling together more, meeting more. I know you guys have, and I know they've spoken, but there just hasn't been enough coordination between those groups.
All right. I'm good. Okay. Number two, then. We'll move on to number two. Consider signing the audit contract for the 2017-2018 audit. Which one of you ladies?
I have it.
Kelly?
This morning, Robin and Ted Humphries from the Tax Office met. We went over, we had received three audit bids, and we had to score them per the auditor's requirements. So based upon scoring, it will be awarded to, I believe it's on there, is BHM.
CPA.
CPA Group, Inc., and they had the highest score in our scoring system. Theirs was not the highest, nor was it the lowest estimate, cost estimate. So it'll be at $25,000. So which is actually down from last year's.
Plus the process, process fee of $2,000?
Yes. The auditor's office requires us to add a, theirs on there. They, they set the guidelines, and then we get to follow their rules.
Okay.
No, this is not the same group, or is it the same group we had?
Same group. Same group that did it last year.
We use that same group. We rated them and reviewed several, and it's the same group that we're using at the Health Department. They're doing a great job.
Yeah, we're happy with them.
Okay. Motion?
I believe that we signed the contract as presented.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, ladies, for, for taking that responsibility on. Okay. Number three, update and possible action regarding the pending litigation in the Civil Action Number 13-C-924 in the Circuit Court of Raleigh County, West Virginia, commonly known as pool litigation. We have our attorney with us today, Mr. Barry Bruce. You want to speak to us?
I believe this conversation is placed in executive session because it deals with litigation strategy.
Okay. Okay. Certainly, that qualifies for executive session. Do we have a met, a motion to go into executive session?
Sound of.
It's been properly moved. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We will go into executive session in order to discuss strategy with a litigation that we're involved in. Everybody just stay put. We will go into the back room here, and hopefully, we won't be long.
Yes, they get to stay late.
Yeah, you're off.
My friends are off.
Yeah.
Somebody Stephen gets somebody to tell you the wine boat. The wine boat.
The wine boat?
The wine boat.
Really?
That was another really good one.
I guess, I hear about beers when we all dress up Thursday night.
The guy from Calhoun tried to sell the airport a piece of property and somebody says, "Well, don't you know about Calhoun?" That part didn't make it. There's no building. Should have put it on the outside.
She's a little too petty. She says West Hall lost today. She made about, she said we could, but you know.
It's all about service.
She didn't want it down.
So, I guess we'll leave again for a while, like we did the last time. But my aunt's too, she has two next week. She has Monday and Wednesday next week. Jimmy's out to town.
After she was done with the lines, she said, "No, we're..."
Did you see this? Didn't even notice.
I wonder if we're canned. Although our dillies were like web street. But it's spelled right.
Someone buy dillies now?
Thank you, you told her. Because there's like, there's a dilly trail that's all, sure like. There's a dilly trail.
Dilly dilly.
That too, Carl Wallace will be there all the time. He's like, dilly, and he spells it with an A's because that was my business with the wine. I'm like, oh, just imagine if I'd have been in high school when I came out. I would have probably remembered so much other. Dilly dilly.
Hard for me because I have to say, you know Jeremy, Kara dilly, because I can't say, say, "Kara dance." Like, say, Jeremy, you know Kara, Kara dilly, whenever I talk about you.
Well, see, and he was, he was like three years ahead.
That's what he said. He said, "I don't really know around." I said, "Oh, you were that close."
What year did he graduate? I think he was like eighty-nine. Because I don't think, I don't like. Yes, he graduated in that, well, he, Stephen. Kim, they graduated together. Okay. Kim and I shared the other West. But she was a senior, I was a sophomore. So, so yeah, Jeremy was older. So, that makes total sense. He was like eighty. No, I knew we weren't there, but I remember Stephen, I couldn't remember him being in that class. So, why didn't he have a state, he was a state turtle. Steve? Yeah. But I think he was like. Maybe a little.
I don't know. When my time comes, I'll tell everybody. I just want to step in around, out in the middle, around sixty.
He read white first to move.
Watch your shirt.
No, Gladys.
Cordia or.
Uh-uh.
Steve, God, not all.
Oh, I got you.
He was on top of the whole mountain.
Uh-huh. Nothing else. My parents were in the last class of right now.
And then Gladys was in the first class of the West.
Got you. So, say they're just in here. Same age as Mr. Kidd.
Where's Heather at?
Okay.
I knew, I thought it was in the. I told my mom. Because it's a class of sixty-eight, sixty-eight. Isn't that funny? He said that in office. But she's got a. Class of sixty-eight, sixty-eight. Sixty-eight, yours is. That is normal, sixth of January, fifty-shirte, you know, right out. Yeah. See, Dad didn't go to kindergarten. They keep us like four to five in first grade.
And then I surveyed the situation. I surveyed.
Coal miners, I'm thinking he drew like thirteen times in eighteen years. I forgot it. And I'm like huge, you know, like. Richwood, Levesley, right now. You know what I mean, all of that.
Last time I did it was just across town.
No, it is, no, yes, Tuesday. October second.
What's October second?
Um, the candidate. And then there's a meeting candidate Thursday, this Thursday at the library.
But it's also my birthday.
This Thursday is your birthday? Oh, October second.
It's taken you with?
I shouldn't have.
Yeah. It's okay.
October, too bad, so bad.
That's okay. I got at this age Luther a surprise party and killed me.
I think you know what's burning this year is my little sister. My little sister is turning forty-four.
Wait till both your children murder their thirty.
Honey, I'm lucky. That's where I'm at. I'm just thinking about how I'm trapped about work coming. I'm going to have to run for board meetings. Can I wear jeans and a home shirt to the board meeting on Thursday? So, you can, so I'll be down straight to the full. Well, the, the tailgate, they're having a big tailgate. It's at four thirty. And of course, you know, what goes on at tailgate? Oh. I look at my calendar, it's different, I'll let you have it, but I think it's six thirty.
I'm sorry, ma'am, you have no time.
At least think out about it.
You're Mike Santa.
Does it plan? I've got like a thing. If it's not in the calendar, it will be this, I know that. See, that's the thing, I don't know that I can handle. This is us. It's a TV series on NBC. Both my hair are season, love it. Like, they'll pick up the phone, even though they have. They are, you're like, well, Valerie, I gotta go to the shows on the. But like, no, you don't want to talk to five, it's not.
Do you turn air on?
A little bit. I do, but it's just the matter of, this side of the building. No, my side of the building is, no, my side of the building is, but this one is. Ours is, ours is broken. I have a workout over there, I got the heavy book here.
Dinner's coming, I think. You can all.
It starts to. They're still here, they don't want. Oh, yeah. It stays cold in the winter. Steve Massey is supposed to be. I was gonna say, I either work in. An icebox. There's no, you can hang me. It's nothing, yeah. There's nothing in the. No, we, Steve Massey is supposed to be. I talked to Steve. He sent me an estimate. I've got to go over it and everything, but being insincere. Because, see, the judges can't keep these on because it's too uneasy, I guess, with all the paralegal stuff. And so, it gets kind of stuck in here. So, anyways, he found some asylum. They had only mentioned two up there. I was like. Well, with the. Calm, Elmore, because he's seven, and I guess, we talked earlier today. It's easier for me to stay out when it's somebody else's expertise. Hey, thank you for letting us borrow. Well, see, I had. We had that at the, it's one of our podiums. He said, "Oh, it's a common," I've heard. In water, it's a chiller pumps the water through. See, we shut the water off because what happens is the pump pushes the water through and it was pushing it all out. So, we've got to drain the line because I can't, he's got the shut off to one. The shut off's the one that's, that'll let, or that disconnect. Turn the system back on. Water is turned. They're going to connect it on this, the pole we're using. That unit will be electrical. But I'm going to. They shut yours.
I do, I do miss the days. We would, I'd put the heater on like a nice like speed. They come in, it's like starting, there is, and it's like. On that side, you would be connecting and then it's all a bit tunnels.
Seventy-eight hours slipped into a coma. That's a little much for me, but that doesn't.
It was, it was the start of contrast.
You're way too young to have ever wanted it. Seventy-eight.
I'm from, I'm from Louisiana.
Sixty-three. There's a weird time, I thought it was sixty-three.
Yeah. I'm moving out.
Thirty-five outside and it's seventy, and it just goes, moves down to shorts.
And a more emotional. Actually. Say those like.
Where are we going?
Oh, I want to.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't said, he said, "Come at sixty-three."
I'm enough from here that people down there can come here. But I'm not from there, people up here.
Now, the question is, have you always been this way?
Not necessarily, it's really.
No, I've always been.
Is that nice, homogenized, parent in the accent? I occasionally split the halls and the aisles from down there and I, my floors turn. So, no one really has that cat anymore.
If you want to be warm, then you buckle up.
I've got to let you.
Appalachian age, yeah. I, I, I've used that phrase before, though. It's not the personal.
Keep your heat bill down. You keep your heat bill down.
Okay, it's always a big one. That's where it comes from. Read very much Shakespeare, it starts with, "Real warm," and it comes with that Elizabethan phrasing and everything. That's, that's where, that's where a lot of our books in our life are. Plus, we know how to count out watches. Seen any, I mean, they're finishing outside. Excuse me, I don't know if they're finishing inside. There hasn't been anyone working.
Gage of France, soldiers in World War II. Like, they, they would get the comment, like, "Your accent is so much, you speak seventeenth century, more of a French." And then they're like, "This is just how we talk." "This is how we talk back off."
The last one that they were carrying down, they take a wheel.
Dump that one, whatever, weather dialers. And I imagine it's the same.
I'm going to change the top of J K, see why.
And so, it's, it's, it's. That's what, that's what we like to, we kind of fix it that.
I'm going to run the salt cage. What's his first name? What is Adrian, Miss Marius? Marius? Yeah, but, but Marius, he would also. I was going to say, I was going to say, Marshall. Marius. I'm trying to, you didn't go to Salt, I'm like, go get us a massage for Salt, maybe then you get an hour. It's the best two hours. I'm like, I need to. We need to go. I need to take mom. You have children, you need. Just go. So, last Friday, we had to go on the first race there, we went over Ivy. So, we went on Friday. Her second one this week, she informed me today, it's at seven. The morning Thursday morning, I was like, "Mom, kill it me here." She was like, "What are you thinking this is doing to me? I'm the one that sleeps usually until nine or ten o'clock in the morning and I don't go to bed until two or three." She's having to change her own schedule. But that would be a nice treat, why not, we hear that she's had a. She finished, she finishes the eighth. And so, she only has five racing there. Well, yeah, we did, she did twenty-five out here with Doctor. And the cancer center out here, there's like.
Number of years in high school?
Number. Basically.
That's just not something. They wouldn't do a high school.
And then, so now she goes back over the airport, five. She was so.
But I, like, I heard a couple of words.
I'm talking. Asked her question, all of a sudden, I looked over and she's like.
So, like, I'd be listening to her. From now on, then, I'd be.
I laughed. She gets just, because they, they can't.
And that's, that's really.
Yeah. Do with light one up.
No, I think back yesterday, well, he's been back in. Saw on Facebook.
Yeah, well. She's already asleep, they should. Jimmy said, like, all of his teenagers were coming down with something. And they all kind of, it's almost like. It's a virus. It's a virus, exactly. He said it's awful. Something, whatever.
Are you crying?
Pass. I know.
You're back in here, do your job, ma'am.
No, I don't know. It was like, what are you doing back there? Makes me nervous that question.
Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to come out of executive session. It's been moved. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye? Aye. No decisions were made during the executive session.
No votes taken.
No votes taken, we, we talked strategy and, and that's it. So, public, we're down to public comment, thank you, Mr. Bruce. Public comment.
There are none.
Okay, any announcements? Cara, Friday at the brewery, what's, what's the time on that?
I believe it's noon to two.
And this is the introduction of the new fella and, and.
Their expansion part.
Yes, I took a tour Thursday, and the equipment they've got in there is impressive. And it's, it'll be an interesting visit, by all means. And then Saturday is the Autumn Fest at Frankfurt, I think it starts, I think in your announcement it said eight or nine, but I saw on the sign that breakfast actually starts at seven. Yes.
Well, that's the best part.
Sausage and.
At the basement of the church, right?
Yeah, sausage and pancakes starts at seven, and, and what time's the parade? Ten, and then the steak dinner in the evening, so you can be entertained and fed real well.
We've, I've taken my A model, went up and did the breakfast, went through the parade, and stayed around for the last several years, but we're gonna be out of town this weekend, so I won't be able to make it, but anybody can make it, especially if you can make it to the pancake breakfast to support the church there, try to do that.
Santa Trail has a fall festival Friday afternoon too, from four to six.
Santa Trail?
Mm-hmm, Christian Academy, it's kinda like the little mini Toot. They sell tickets and you can get samples of food up. Yeah, exactly, and that's coming up, Toot too, Toot is.
Yes, that's right.
The twelve, thirteen.
Okay.
Can you launch a Republican on Saturday?
Next weekend.
In White Sulphur.
But what is it? Oh, yeah, that's right.
I think they have a catapult.
Get tickets at the visitor's center.
Oh, that's.
I was told the Republican Party has a catapult, you can launch a Republican on Saturday at the fairground.
That's Sunday. You, I don't know who you're gonna be launching on Saturday, but Sunday is the day. Yes.
Is there a what member?
Catapult, yeah, well, I would imagine.
I haven't seen if they really have a nap.
One other announcement, I don't know if you all noticed, but this is probably the first all Republican county commission meeting that's been held in Green Bar County. And I will point out that this gentleman to my left is the first county commissioner, Republican county commissioner to be reelected. And this guy on my right was the first one to be reelected back to back, and I'm the newest, I've been a Republican for, what, ten days now? So, Tina, did you see any difference? Tina asked me in an interview if it would be any way different that I handled the meeting, and I said, well, I bought a red tie, and that, that's the only change probably who will notice. But, but I've been conservative, I had conservative viewpoints for, for a long time, and, and I just thought I was, I was welcomed in by the Republican Party, and so I made that change about ten days ago. So, I share that with you. Anything else? Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye? Aye. The motion carries, meeting adjourned, thank all of you for attending.
Pat, be good. Mike, you do the same, buddy.
That was pretty funny, Deb. She was asking. You don't want that for souvenir? I'm just here. Rob was coming, if he was, she might even switch parties.
Hey Spartan fans, sharpvideotv.com has an exciting promotion for you this year. We're giving away seventy-five dollars at each Spartan home game, registration's easy. All you do is go to Bank of Monroe and Fairley and Fritz's Pharmacy too in Lewisburg.
And Neehawks.
Fill out your name, put it in the box, we're gonna draw out a winner at each home game, all five home games this season. If you're present when your name is drawn, we're gonna give you an additional piece of Green Berets merchandise, shirt, hat, something cool like that, you'll be able to support the Spartans all week. Additional details are available on our Facebook page, facebook slash sharp video. Remember, Bank of Monroe, Fairley, Fritz's Pharmacy too.
And Neehawks.
Register to win seventy-five bucks in your pocket, we'll see you at Spartan Stadium this year, good luck.